Focus on us. We need help more. We're doing good, but we need you guys to listen to us and we need you guys to help us more. And we can't get tutoring after school because there's no late buses for us. So right after school, we have to go straight home because there's no bus for us. So how are we supposed to extend our knowledge? How are we supposed to stay with our teachers and learn if we don't know what's going on? I feel that you guys should focus more on the capital of Hartford instead of putting all your time and effort and money into suburban schools where they're doing fine. This is the capital of Connecticut. We should be doing better than anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next speaker, Minnie Lesperance. And hi, Cynthia. Good evening to both of you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Minnie Lesperance. I'm seventeen. I'm in the Nursing Academy. I can't even represent because I'm president of Student Council. My issue today is on the curriculum because I think it's very rigorous. The other day I called myself an SAT prep and it's just a lot of simple questions were being asked such as reading. Many students didn't know that a subject and a verb belong in a sentence and I feel like it's sad because, you know, we're taking SATs tomorrow and we're just setting ourselves up for failure. I mean, the curriculum itself and it's pretty much it. I feel like it's just not fair because suburban kids, they get all this kind of knowledge. You know, you put yourself in a room with a suburban kid and the urban kid and it's like they get, they have all the answers to stuff and they're intelligent, they just, you know, it's just sad. I also think that we're getting out of school at a time that isn't fair. Like many students work, many students just have stuff to do. We can't compete for sports if we're getting out at 3:10 and, you know, time change. It's hard to take the bus at six o'clock at night, especially if you're in a community where there's a lot of violence. But I feel like you should bump the school. I mean, you should just change the time to at least an hour or thirty minutes.
Thank you, Minnie.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hiya Sengdiani, to all the board members and superintendent. I'm Hiya Sengdiani here back here. And I'm here to speak, I'm trying to get our student to be more vocal about things that happen in their school. And the first thing she wanted to actually say is that, again, our early admission to school, seven fifteen and two fifteen, that's the appropriate time for school, especially for high school. Because these kids have to work and I'm telling you, most of these kids are the breadwinners for their own and they have sports. These are things that happen in our school. They're leaving school. I want to emphasize that to you. It has not changed the attendance rate, it has not changed anything. We need to get our kids to school early and get them out early so they can get along with your life, okay? So I'm hoping that you did promise that October you would look into the time trap with the buses. The buses are always late in the morning. We got to get these kids to school early so they can get back to the elementary, so they can bring the elementary kids into school that start at nine o'clock. So we have to make sure when we're doing that kind of a time trap, we said, okay, kids, high school kids get to school at seven fifteen and get out at two fifteen. That works very well with the buses and stuff like that. So I'm not sure what was the concept of you starting school later and getting out of school later. Keeping school, kids in school longer doesn't mean they learn anymore. It's important to understand that. All right, Cynthia? The number one thing is they're not blocking you over eight hundred signatures from that school, Hartford High, where the kids want to get to school at seven fifteen and get out at two fifteen. No more I don't want to say anymore about that. But anyway, I just have one or two things to say and it's really important. We have a wonderful principal at Moreland School that we're losing. And I'm asking you, superintendent, what are you doing to keep our good people in the system? Because it seems like they're moving faster than they can and that's not right. We need quality people in the system. You have to find ways and means to keep them. This is a guy that came in and brought a school up to cold and he should get blue ribbon too for that school, that's what he has done. Darren, that's his name. I want to recognize him as a great, wonderful principal for parents and teachers and students, okay? So I wanted to know and I would hope you would recognize him because he's leading the system. And I know we have a wonderful guy coming, Jose, I knew him from way back, and I know he will do the same job. But I hate to see our, we're losing wonderful principals, okay? So please try to do something about stopping the people getting exited, all right? One more thing I want to say, the accreditation for our schools. As we know about Hartford in general, and I go back to say, one school in the city of Hartford is accredited. The charter magnet school. We need to get, look forward and get in all of other schools accredited because it does matter when a kid applies for hours to know that these kids come in from an accredited school. They have a lot of stuff against them. Low test scores and a school that's not accredited. Let's look at all those kinds of things. That prevents the kids from getting where they need to go most of the time. It's really important. And again, the buses are late every morning. I'm at Hartford High, kids, buses are coming at eight o'clock. These kids were supposed to be at school way before that because they go to class at eight fifteen. They can't have breakfast because by then they're getting, it's too late. But they're still eating because we want them to eat. So it's important for you to be serious to do something about the school buses, okay? And the other one thing...
Hiya Sengdiani.
Yeah. Okay. I also want to support number one resolution in Terminal Court Middle School in the city of Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you, Hiya Sengdiani, very much. Our next speaker is Samaria Smith. Sorry if I got your name. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. To everybody on the board, all that are here. My name is Samaria Smith. I'm the PTO president at Global Communications Academy. Thank you for having us here this evening. I'm here to express our excitement about our new building at the Court Campus. We are really excited about the change. Change is not always easy, but we are welcoming the challenge of change. I'm here because the parents, the PTO, we would like for there to be a formal MOU established between the city, the school, and Hartford Police Department so that we can maintain clear lines of communication so that we can, we are able to, the school is able to access the gym, the pool when we need to during school hours, and that we can work hand in hand with Hartford Police Department. We want to show our community that by working together with the Hartford Police Department that we can be the safest school in the city, that it can work if we work together. So I implore you to consider establishing a formal MOU so that as the parent, as a parent, that I know that my child is able to access the facilities as they are, as they will be, to the fullest of the, you know, you know what I'm saying? We want them to be able to access everything that's there. God forbid that, you know, they have this nice gym and this nice pool there and they can't use it. So I implore you to consider establishing a formal MOU so that we can know, the parents can be rest assured that our babies will be taken care of and will have adequate access to the facilities there on hand. Again, we are really excited about our move and about going to the campus. And we also want to encourage, encourage everyone, we want our kids to be protected from any dangerous, potentially dangerous activities. They see things every day outside of school. We don't want them to be at school and have to witness certain activities that the police may, you know, train me, whatever it may be. We don't, we want to protect our babies as much as we can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I, again, implore you to consider a MOU.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Millie Soto. Good evening.
I'm the PTO president of Park School. I've been a part of that school for fifteen years. And today I'm coming because I want to know why that Park School, Park School third grade reading went down thirty-eight point one down, percent down. And I want to know how are we going to catch up?
That's a great question to bring us to your school governance council and to your principal. And if you'd like the team from my office to participate, we certainly will and we do have, we do participate in this type of conversations. To look at tracking the number of students who were there the previous year, whether they still are in the school, which skill areas were deficient and what may have caused that specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Next speaker, David Ayano.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, fellow citizens of Hartford. Just for those people who don't know me, my name's David Ayano. I live at 150 Warrenton Avenue. I have four daughters who graduate from Hartford Public High School. I was for twenty years there on the executive board of the PTSO at Hartford Public High School. I'm a member of Veterans for Peace and the Vietnam Veterans. One of the things I want to briefly touch on is the unintended consequences of Chef O'Neil and the lottery system. Chef O'Neil was something that was necessary that had to happen, I understand that, to address the discrimination in education in the state of Connecticut, but there are unintended consequences. Parents wait years before they get their choice in the lottery system. At the charter magnet high schools, if you fail academically, you can be dropped without recourse to re-enter. Hartford High has to work with all students regardless of academic ability. If you're failing at Hartford High, you stay at Hartford High till you, till you come up. The superintendent, and I'm not talking particularly about Dr. Kishimoto, but this refers to Dr. Adamowski, the superintendent promised to parents who are residents and taxpayers that if they wanted a slot in their neighborhood school, they would get one. Children who live next to their schools are to be defaulted into their neighborhood school if the parents request it. Student-based budgeting has hurt the public schools and the magnet charter and CREX schools have diverted funding from the Hartford school budget. I would just like you to look into some of those unintended consequences and see if we can address them. The other issue I'm here for is one that I'm sure you know, I brought up before, it's about Veterans Day. I would relate a history lesson. This tale is dedicated to all the veterans in the school system, parents who are veterans and all families who have someone who's serving or is serving in Iraq and Afghanistan. Cato the Elder, a Roman senator, ended every speech with the phrase "Delenda est cartago", meaning "Carthage must be destroyed." After three wars over four centuries, the Roman legion defeated Carthage. The men were killed, the women and children sold into slavery, and then Cipio, the Roman commander, had rocks and plows salt into the soil so nothing would ever grow again. What you have done by taking Veterans Day from the veterans is akin to the Romans erasing the memory of Carthage. You have poured salt into our wounds. It hurts me. It makes us more invisible than we already are. I would ask all parents who are veterans and all families who have someone who served to keep their children out of school on November twelfth, the day after Veterans Anonymous Day, to prove that you have not forgotten us and heal the wounds we have.
Mr. Ayano, I just want to just reiterate the conversation that we had the last time you brought this up, which is the, when we start looking at the calendars, the future calendars, that we would bring a team together to look at whether we would reinstate Veterans Day. You've brought this to the table several times, at first in several other individuals as well, someone reviewed the next set of calendars that come before this board that we would do so. I also committed to you that on Veterans Day, we would have a full academic program dedicated to Veterans Day for that school day, for that day which is a school day.
Some teachers are doing that. I want you to that. And I also gave you a list of twenty-eight kids service school day for large schools at the summer level. They need to be good men too on that level of school.
I just wanted to reiterate what I had stated.
Thank you, David. The next speaker, Levi Cardulis.
That's Levy.
Levy, sorry, Mr. Cardulis.
No problem. Board of Ed, superintendent, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to talk about the principals. More than twenty percent of our schools don't have a principal right now. What concerns me about that is how are we going to attract principals to our district, for our kids? How are we going to keep them here in this district? And it leads me into the school-based budgeting because I'm the head custodian at Buckley High School. And, you know, I have a senior at Buckley, freshman at Hartford High, and the little ones are at Annie Fisher. And I'm really concerned that we have given the principals jurisdiction over the building and the grounds. So for any renovations that are going to be made to the school or any upgrades that are going to be made in the school, the principal has to take money out of their budget to go into the building. The building is separate from the school. Now, the building, the district or the city needs to be in control of because what dictates property value in any community in America are well-maintained schools. I want, as a parent, I want my principal to solely concentrate on the kids and on the curriculum. My principal shouldn't have to worry about the hole in the wall or this got to get painted or we got to spend all of this, you know, four or five thousand dollars to do whatever in the field house. I don't want the principal to be spending money like that on the building or the grounds. So I would really like, I'm employing the district that we need to re-establish a department of buildings and grounds. We need to, because we only have, what, two carpenters, two locksmiths, two plumbers, one floor glazer, I mean, floor mechanic, one window glazer. And, you know, and it's sad, you know, where we have all of these, these few people and then the school, the principal is going to be responsible for the upkeep of the property? That, I just don't understand that and I really would like to see proper staffing at the buildings. Because if we're going to spend fifty million dollars on a school, if everyone's going to have, what, two, three custodians in the building, how do we maintain that property? And how do I keep my property value up in the city of Hartford at this point? Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Luis Caban.
Good evening, please.
Good evening. Superintendent, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Pollan, Chairman. Luis Caban, I'm a resident of the city, retired nonprofit executive here with SINA. Before I start, I want to echo, I'm also a Vietnam veteran and I like to echo the sentiments and propositions. I want to speak a little bit about civil discourse. I've been kind of reading the papers and listening to the chatter in the city and have been somewhat concerned. I started thinking back some years back in a, in a political science course where the conversation, the discussion of the day was around a newsreel that we saw from the previous week where the legislature in a nation, country, actually got physical with each other. I mean, we're just a melee in the middle of a legislative session. And the discussion, mind you, this is some years back, another string checking if they sent. But the discussion back then was that we were very fortunate to be in America where we discussed politics with some civility. And therefore, I've been, I've been somewhat concerned with that. And I wonder what kind of example do we set for our kids if we do not have civil discourse? We know that one of the issues that we're facing today amongst our students and amongst our youth is bullying. Well, incivil discourse lends itself very much to that, in fact, engenders, and I, and I'm very much concerned about that. So I urge you, gentlemen, ladies, please, let's be civil with each other. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardulis. Tayana White. Tayana White.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Tayana White and I didn't, a few days ago, you guys accepted a donation from an anonymous donor and I want to thank you for that. And I didn't come here to criticize or anything, not saying that everybody's criticizing, but this is the problems in our school. But I came here to thank you guys for all that you have done. I know it's not a lot, but we still thank you for all this. I am also the junior senior class president and I'm in the Nursing Academy. For those of you guys who don't know, it's the best academy in Hartford High. So I just want to thank you for that. My senior classmate, Ms. Foley, she's the best. Thank you.
Tayana, I know we're not doing too much. Thank you for making sure that we were reminding of that. We appreciate it though. Thank you very much, Tayana. Very nice. Yvette Diana.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Oh, this is Jane Bussel. We're talking about the same subject, so I figured it's time for both of you to...
First, it's Spanish, so I don't know if you guys want somebody to translate or...
If you can translate if you'd like.
Good morning. I'm glad you're here. 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 Good evening to everyone, Kishimoto, members of the board, and all parents and school members.
My name is Jane Bussel. I have three children who attend the Hartford Public School System.
I'm the vice president of the PTO, the Public High School.
I am the vice president of the PTO at Buckley High School.
I'm also a member of the government council and I'm a very active mother.
My children, when they were little, they were seven years in elementary school. And they were also part of the design of the academy of Latin studies.
When my children were younger, my children were students at Burn School for seven years and also part of the redesign called Latino Studies, Burn Latino Studies, sorry.
When they were choosing professors, they were some who, personally, didn't have qualifications, didn't know the culture of the area, didn't know Spanish. And the majority, before the design, had professors who were very good.
Upon choosing the proper staff for your redesign, for your redesign, some of them did not know the culture, the language, or had the patience to deal with the kids.
My children, they were two years in that brand new design that I think never worked for them.
And why did the supervisor take four years to realize that this program did not work for us? Why not do it the first year of the actual program being, taking place? Why?
I think it was a disaster and the reform didn't work in the first year. And today, four years after elementary school, I think they're flailing, they're not good. It's a shame. They're a pain. They've spent many years, the basics of elementary school are still not good.
I think this redesign did not work. Now the kids are at high school and they can't keep up with most of the tasks there. So I think we should find better ways to redesign.
Thank you. Millie Arseneigis.
Hi, Millie.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Honorable mayor, honorable board members, Dr. Kishimoto. Yvette really needed to speak in the bell thing, so if you get a chance at the end, we'll allow her to speak.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Millie Arseneigis. I live on 126 Yale Street in Hartford, Connecticut, and I have two beautiful boys. One is currently attending Central Connecticut State University and the other is a sophomore at University High of Science and Engineering. As a parent advocate, I have also been actively engaged in the Hartford school reform since its inception in 2007. I brought today three examples of schools who have been redesigned since 2008 to share with you some of my and other parents' concerns of the lack of progress, lack of monitoring, and lack of communication throughout this reform. I've heard over and over again throughout this reform from you, Dr. Kishimoto, that third grade reading progress is a predictor of high school success. And I believe in that because that's what we're off to do, believe in what this board or previous boards tell us and our superintendent. You have America's Choice at Sand, third grade reading, 2009, twenty-two point two percent. That was when the redesign started. It's a new principal flourishing. Everything's running so great. He brought the school up to thirty-one points, thirty-one point six percent. He brought the school up thirty-one point six percent in reading, in third grade reading, to fifty-three point eight percent. In November 2009, principal leaves. He was only there for a year. Great principal. 2011, there was an eight percent decrease. It was an acting principal appointed for six months, then new principal hired from Florida, already specialized in America's Choice, July 2011. 2012, we are now at thirty-eight point one percent in third grade reading, seven point seven percent decrease. And now there's a new acting principal. So since 2009, we've had four principals in four years. Four principals in four years. How can you sustain a reform in this manner? No one can. It's impossible. And the people that suffer are our kids. That's who suffer. And I'm not going to... And I'm not going to go over each and every one example because I don't have time, obviously, the bell. But I will say this. It's a trend now. We can see it, and we need to take action. And for parents to come up here, brave parents like Millie Soto, an engaged parent, and ask you a question about her third grade reading scores at Clark Elementary that went down 38%, and for you not to have an answer for her, that's inappropriate. Do not send her back to school, ladies. You should have an answer for her. My question for you today is what do I tell the parents of those children whose children went through this failure of a redesign? Because they are there too. We can't forget that. You could talk about all of your successes and say, "We got one more point in this fifth grade, I mean, fifth year of progress," but we cannot forget the kids that didn't make it because they're there. Some of them are homeless, some of them are trying to get jobs that it is very impossible for them to get jobs. And it's because of this failure, and we must not forget that. Thank you.
Ms. Arseneigus, just some response to a couple of comments. One is, this isn't the forum to do data analysis, but data analysis is so critical to understanding what's happening in our schools. And we do have very involved forums through our school governance councils. We also have principal supervisors who go into schools and do that data analysis to support the principals. We work with teacher teams, teacher teams are in data teams, also following students. So we have a very involved process to look at that data. And as I mentioned earlier, if there is a need to have central office staff to support with that data analysis at Clark School, at the school-based level, that's certainly something we can do and will do. And we always honor those requests for that data support. The other matter, which I'm not going to have a lot of time to talk about here, but it's a very important topic that has been raised, is the question about principals and the fact that we have multiple factors that are impacting our principals being recruited by other districts. And the HR committee certainly has asked that question on the board side. Internally, we have been looking at what we need to put in place to ensure that we have a competitive package for principals to come to Hartford and also stay in Hartford. Stability at every leadership level is absolutely important to us. We have a reform process that has captured statewide attention, and many of our principals are very actively recruited constantly. And we're constantly looking at how we retain our capacity here. And that's a matter that we take very seriously, and we are looking at how through our talent management approach, we ensure we recruit top principals, but that we also retain them. So this is a matter that you've raised as community members and as parents that is absolutely important to us and we will be and continue to be planning around. So thank you for raising those.
Thank you, Dr. Kishimoto. Nancy Mendez, please. Good evening.
Good evening. I like your shirt. Yeah. I just wanted to address the board members, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thank you for all you're doing. I have two children in the Hartford Public School system. One is an eighth grader at Global, and I have a lower elementary child on Moreland Montessori program. The end of my son is, the little one is, this is the fourth year in school. I've seen a huge improvement of what the program has to offer. I like that we have a vice principal that is very much on board with our program, Ms. Pata. And I like the, our teachers, they're very hands-on with our kids. I'm very happy. I think our children are our future, but also the parents have to be there, you know, to be a part of every day for school. I'm one of them. And I'm also a secretary for the PTA, I'm more than Montessori program. And I'm all for this, you know? I'm part of this, wanting our schools to move forward in the future. We are the future, we are the future, but we have to help them. And thank you again.
Thank you very much. Stephanie Romero.
Good evening.
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
As a current parent to my son, Isaiah Santiago, who attends Batons's Early Review Lab, well, now it's magnet school as well, I would like to thank you for first I went through the whole transition to have it approved as a magnet school. And I can see changes being made to improve, but I'm also here to say that I know my take is not, change is not overnight. I also attended Hartford Public School since elementary school. I went to Barbara Brown, I went to Port Mello, I went to Hartford High, graduated from Hartford High. I did struggle a lot graduating, not graduating because I had all my credits, but once I started school, currently I'm in my sixth year, I'm still a junior during my bachelor's because I had delayed myself taking on credit classes in order to get to college level. So for that example alone, I chose to be very involved in my son's education to make sure he's beyond what he needs to be at grade level. I am a firm believer that a child's community or support team should consist of school, parents, and the community as a whole should not only be left to the school. But I'm very, I see much improvement since when I was in school to see my son in school. My son, this is his third year in school, my son by kindergarten, you know, these are little things, but show me a lot. My son knows his ABC backwards, for example. Math is, he wants a laboratory because he wants to develop in, how he says it, inventions. You know, those are interests that many kids his age don't have, you know? But it's also, I find a key that the little things that are not working to have corrected on a, you know, timely basis and not, don't wait for a whole year or two to pass. But I see a big improvement from when I went to school to now that my son is in school. I do appreciate, you know, the support you guys can bring to each and every school. That's thank you.
Jasmine Alicia.
Good evening.
Good evening, board. Dr. Kishimoto. Good evening, everybody. Hi. My name is Jasmine Aleseya. I am currently an FRA at Batons's Elementary. I'm also a former volunteer at Batons's and a former choice staff over the summer. I consider myself to be a very involved parent. I have a kindergartner who's in special ed at Batons's, actually, and I am, I have to be honest, I'm originally from East Hartford, so I was hesitant when I realized I was going to be enrolled in my kindergartner into a Hartford school. And I can say now, two years later, that every concern I had has been put at ease. I have felt so supported by the staff at her school, by the staff at the welcome center, and even by Dr. Kishimoto, who I run into in the elevator and at the center, central office. Every step of the way for my daughter has been just so, she's just been so supportive, and she's learned so much and come so far in all of her delays and her development is just extremely, extremely increased. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. But what I wanted to comment on is the fact that I have faith in this reform, and I have seen a lot of changes, positive changes in every level of Hartford Public Schools. I do have faith in it. And I realize that there's no such thing as a perfect reform, there's no perfect revolution, there's no utopia in school system. So, Dr. Kishimoto, I just want you to know that myself and a lot of other parents do support you and do support what you stand for, the third grade promise and everything that comes with it, and we have faith in you. So thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Aleseya, we're glad that you came from East Hartford to the city that rocks Hartford. The next speaker, Maria Valdez.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Been a while since I've been sitting up there.
Welcome back.
Husband had health issues, so I had to take care of him first. I have one concern. My son was involved in a fight in Buckley High School, Lower School, two weeks ago, well, actually been three. My son got suspended, sent to court, those are his consequences. Fine, you know what I'm saying? He almost got jumped by gang men, gang crews, whatever you want to call them, because they want to cover the sky with their hand, but you can't, because this is reality. We have gangs in our schools. My son tried, he tried to defend himself, and because he said the F-word and said to the gang bangers, said, "F you," he got suspended, ten days. The other three kids that tried to roll on him are back in school. My son, when I took him back from suspension, Mr. Pata told me that my son was straight and ready to go to Opportunity High. So I told him, "How is he ready to go to Opportunity High when I have to go through a process? I have to take my son to take a test, I have to take him to an interview, and then if he makes it to the second interview, that means he was accepted." So there's protocols that Ms. Richardson has to follow. Fine, I went and did it. My son has to wait until the end of this month to go back to school because Mr. Pata does not want him back in Buckham. But the other three kids that fought him are in Buckham while my son is sitting at home. And I don't think that's fair at all, okay? And if the bell rings, you got to give me time because this is pissing me off, really as a parent, it's pissing me off. Because if I don't send my child to school for three days, DCF will be knocking on my door. But because Mr. Pata decided to throw his problem to Mrs. Richardson, Mr. McPaulsco, that's his name, and Martha, that I involved her in it because I went to Martha, these three people did their job. They're helping me to the max, but where is Mr. Pata in this? Nowhere. He dumped his problem on somebody else's back, and I don't think that's fair at all. Just because he's going to have the special visitors coming in November and December? No, I don't think so. If DCF comes to my house, I will sue him personally because he's the one that's keeping that education away from my child.
Mrs. Gomez, I want to make sure that we follow up and know, one, that your son is in the right school, is in school every day and not missing any school days. You're pointing to one particular principal in one particular school, which is this situation. Diana Roberge is the supervisor for that school. She supervises the directors who oversee all the principals. I'd like you to have a conversation with her right now so she can get all of your information and we can follow up directly with you.
Personally, I do not want him back in Buckham.
But I think we need to make sure we need his...
Yeah, but the thing is that he hasn't even had a courtesy, I haven't even received a courtesy call to find out if my son is fine, if did he make it to Opportunity High or did I find another school for him? My son's supposed to be in school right now. He don't have him in school. My son is falling back in his place, that he worked hard as soon as he started school this year to bring up his F and D's that he earned in Hartford High because he didn't like the school, because it was a quick transaction, so he didn't give the school an opportunity. Because my other two girls went to Hartford High and they never had problems, okay? But he decided to go to Buckham and all of a sudden, all this is going down. My son is only 17. He needs to be in school, not at home.
He does, and I want to make sure that we get him in school right away.
And another thing, I'm part of the Clark School PTO. You said that it's for us to bring the third grade reading CNTs to the principal and the governance council. I'm going to make it personal that tomorrow I'm going to go and meet with Ms. Stone, and if she tells me what's going to be in place, I'm going to give her the chance because she's the new principal in the school. But if it don't happen from here till next year, I think the board should think about redesigning the classroom. Thank you.
Corrie Rodriguez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Kishimoto, my topic is about the governance council. We don't understand why you are hiring leadership greater Hartford when you said that their last contract was last year, and the last November minute, you got rid of the school governance facilitator. And now you have money, 62, 66,200, 66,200, to hire, when you said that this work was going to be in-house, right? So we, the parents, I would like to know why now and what are the outcomes of their training in 2011?
Actually, I think that's one part of the item, one item that's on the agenda in a few minutes, and then the other is a longer-term conversation around the SGC council's support. We have gone through the process of interviewing for a halftime SGC position, which is what went through the budget process. We had lots of parent input into that process, so we have a candidate who's coming into that halftime position. For that transition, one thing we made sure was that as we transitioned and look at the continued contract with Leadership Greater Hartford was moving away from process-based training to school-based support, which is what the SGC council co-chairs asked for to be continued in the contract in their debriefing with the board at the end of the year. And so we want to honor that request from the SGC council co-chairs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Saylor.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sam Saylor. I live at 54 Green Place Street, I have two children and more wetsuit shoes that I love very much. There is a, what I call, a rhythm of ownership that belongs solely to the parents. These are our children. We walk around believing that we are the taxpayers and the voters of this town, and we have elected some of you and elected one of you that selected some of you, but we are the sponsors of that change. That rhythm seemed to have gone dead or ignored, and we really need to lift it back up again. I've been looking over some pictures in the last couple of days of when we used to have perfect attendance, one of the greatest parental involvement activities known to public school systems in Connecticut. Over a thousand parents attending, all hoping that they would win the car, but all thank God that the children went to school and received at least a perfect attendance award. That got canceled against our wishes. I enjoyed some of that flavor this summer with the program that was happening at your library about reading. That was wonderful. It reminded me of those days. It reminded me of those days. We need to continue that kind of stuff. Because parents need to feel the rhythm of ownership and connectivity to this process. Well, to hear the phrase of the, "This is all about the children", another phraseology that I turn against. Because it's all about the hopes and dreams of parents for their children. And in the other school system, you would hear that rhythm of ownership, that these are our children. You're the board, elected or selected, to carry out our wishes and our dreams for our children. Believe it or not, we dream and we do wish and hope in the city of Hartford as parents, for a better life for our children. And we need to be a part of that process at every turn. Not just included when you feel as though it's appropriate, but listen to us. I would like, I heard some rumor about our PTO's not working, not fighting together. And we need to find some way to not let that happen and let them implode. You know? And we hope that we can make that difference. But it's important that you, as board members, get out into the communities. You, you need to get out, know North Hartford. I was up there today and met some parents here, and they didn't know they're board members. And we used to have board members like Noel and, uh, the other lady. They ran a parent engagement committee that was a part of the board. They included us. You need to appreciate and respect the rhythm of ownership. It's out there, it's alive as well. It's what's needed to be an active participant and it's growth that we need for this school system. I encourage you to get out, know your community and get involved with the parents. Thank you.
Dr. Crowder.
Hello, Dr. Kishimoto. Mr. Chairman, Mayor, and board members. I come with something a little bit more, I'm thinking, exciting. But first I have to comment on what this, what the, um, young lady said from Nursing Academy. Because I've been, I went through Hartford Public Schools from pre-K to twelve, with the exception of being bused out. Seventh grade, Grandy. It wasn't for me, but I did my seventh grade there. But what I noticed was when I got, when I was in Weaver tenth grade, I had the seventh grade history book I had at Grandy. So it is a problem. We don't want to set them up for failure, because we want to give them what they can handle. Um, but it is a, it is a difference from what, um, students in other districts receive compared to us. And we really, um, I'm hoping that we're on the way to that rigorously. We have it in some schools, but not all. So today I'm introducing, um, Purpose, which is Parents Uniting Resources to Promote Outstanding Student Education. We have issues, um, you know, with performance. And one of the ways that, um, parents are, parents know that they can support the third grade promise is where seeking out, is some, is some students that never, the first time they're introduced to school is when they arrive for kindergarten or pre-K. So what we were doing, um, over the summer, what we're currently doing, currently doing now, is focusing on babies, toddlers, pre-K. Seeking out the parents, I'm saying, door knocking, um, introducing them to early literacy. And it's a program, a train, the trainer that I went to, um, Let's Talk. And what that does is, is a simple program that introduces literacy, quality of language to babies. Simple things that we can do as parents in the home, so when they get to school, they're ready. Our kids are hearing thirty million less words spoken compared to suburban kids. So we, we're looking to at least impact the babies, so when they get there, they're ready to learn. And encouraging parents and take, and have parents taking that ownership. When your kid arrives at school, they need to be ready. So we're doing it from the beginning and so we're, so when they come, they are ready. And we're hoping to have a good relationship with the library. Because my kids absolutely love to read and I need other parents to get their kids there. The one, we have some parents and kids that love it too, but for those that do not, we need to get them loving reading. Good reading, you'll have a successful, um, experience in school. Thank you.
Michael Quasfer.
Mr. B. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Michael Quasfer, also known as Mr. B. I'm a PIZ teacher at Global Communications Academy. I'm talking on behalf of an agreement for the auditorium, pool, and gyms and West Building Park. Over the past three decades, childhood obesity rates in America have tripled. And today, nearly one in three children in America are overweight or obese. The numbers are even higher in African-American and Hispanic communities, where nearly forty percent of children are overweight or obese. One-third of the children born in two thousand or later will suffer from diabetes, heart disease, high blood pressure, cancer, asthma, sleep apnea, or social discrimination. Everyone has a role to play in reducing childhood obesity, including all the GCA parents, elected officials from all levels of government, the school, healthcare professionals, faith-based, community-based organizations, and private sector companies. Your involvement is key to ensuring a healthy future for our children by providing adequate use for the physical activities during the day and a safe campus. While research is still being conducted, there have been some studies showing that obese children are not learning as well as those who are not obese. Further, physical fitness has been shown to be associated with high achievement. That's what we're working toward. A future where kids are having fun, feeling better about themselves, and on the road to a healthier future at Global Communications Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Johnson.
Andrew Johnson, president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. This evening, I would like to speak about two proposals that the Hartford Public Schools have put forward or are about to send. One proposal is called District/Charter Collaboration Proposal, the Bill in Melinda Gates Foundation. The second proposal is the Race to the Top Grant. The Bill in Melinda Gates' proposal that requests five million dollars. This proposal has apparently been in the making for two years. I say "apparently" because the first I saw of the Bill in Melinda document was October 4th, 2012, when it was given to the ed issues person from the Hartford Federation of Teachers, who was representing me at a meeting. Prior to that meeting, there was a meeting held September 7th, 2000, that invited TM to come and hear about the program that Achievement First has done at their school. When I received the written proposal, which was in collaboration with a Hartford Public School with two charter schools, one being Achievement First, a Hartford charter that does note HFT members, and Jamoki Academy Charter School, which is not a Hartford school, I was shocked. Where is this proposal coming from? Never in the last year was this spoken about, yet the date of submitting the proposal was August 29th, 2012. When I read the proposal, I was more confused, because this proposal not only asked for five million dollars to fund a collaboration for Achievement First, Jamoki, and Hartford Public Schools, with an abbreviated following plan. One, a collaborative plan to develop high-impact school leaders by building an exemplary residence program in place of AF and building capacity of both the district and JA, I'm saying initials, you understand, to develop strong leaders. Two, a teacher coaching and evaluation initiative that will increase the number of effective teachers in our schools. Three, improve student achievement through implementation of Common Core-based curriculum and assessment. And lastly, build the district's capacity to retain quality school leaders through the transformation of low-performing schools replicated, replicating, and actually been around for two years. There is more that is not only surprising, but insulting as well. For the past two years, the HFT and the Hartford Public Schools have been involved in a collaborative effort to study and agreed upon a new evaluation document, Charlotte-Danison/TeachGate Model. As a collaborative act, the HFT requested that Hartford teachers be trainers of their peers. This also was agreed to. Sorry. Again, this was agreed upon and took place at the end of the school year 2011, beginning of this school year now. The HFT requested that our teachers have training on new eval models on each of the monthly professional development days. The HFT teachers' training have, trainers have spent hours working with the schools, and it is a most successful endeavor. Both the HFT and the Hartford Public Schools have received positive feedback to these efforts. Then this proposal of Gates comes into light. Obviously, that the Hartford Public School no longer wants collaborative and does not want to represent Hartford teachers. They are finished with the collaborative effort, and now will move on to do their own with charter schools. Finally, part of the grant, the Gates grant, has been embedded into the Race to the Top proposal. To have parts of this uncollaborative grant now placed into the Race to the Top grant is absolutely an unacceptable, careless attitude by the Hartford Board of Education. And unfortunately, a return to the message, teachers don't matter. This is most acceptable. Because of this, I have informed Dr. Kishimoto that I, as president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers and a person required to sign the RTT grant, cannot do so. I have told the superintendent that I am willing to discuss this further in hopes that we can once again work in collaborative manner, good for all those involved. Thank you.
Alexis de Torre, please.
Good evening, Alexis de Torre. Good evening to all of you. Dr. Kishimoto, the head of the school, the chairman, the mayor, all board members. I'd like to first thank you all for serving our city. Take your time out of the running day and do all this for us. Many of you know me as a, I'm a councilperson or a council president, or else I had another life before that. I was a Hartford school teacher for many years. I was a school administrator, certified both in K-8 and as a school administrator. So I think I know a little bit about the school system. In addition to the fact that two of my kids went through the Hartford school system. Today, I'm here because, uh, for the last number of years, uh, as a councilperson, we spent a lot of time, uh, money and support of our school system. And for many years prior to Dr. Adnansis coming on board, one of my pet peeves was that we were always doing more of the same. When he came on board, we saw a transformation, a true transformation, not a reforming of the school system, but a transforming of our school system. And many great things have happened. Because of that, we spent a lot of money in restructuring, refurbishing, uh, both our physical infrastructure of our school buildings and also our academic infrastructure. We're doing great things, uh, that I believe have turned the school system around and are truly, uh, putting Hartford, uh, out front as an innovative and progressive, uh, community. A city that, uh, knows how to make good changes and is moving forward in the right direction. Now, I've lived in Hartford for the past forty years, and I've seen, uh, a lot of changes. I'm concerned, uh, recently, very much concerned, because I don't want to see what's happened in the past in our city, Second Amendment City Council, happened to this board. And that is that it digressed from the true, uh, goals of this, of the board, which is the education of our children and the development of our community in general. To digress from that by playing into the hands of the media and making, uh, fodder, giving fodder to the media, making it a circus, a media circus for. We can't afford to do that. We owe it to our parents. We owe it to our teachers. We owe it to our students. We owe it to our community as we try to develop this city forward. The mayor tries to, uh, put a better face to the city, to, to let the world know that Hartford is a good place to come to, to live, that we have an educational system that will, uh, do well for their children. We cannot afford to have any kind of digression from what we truly have to do. So I, I really urge you to be very careful about how you are perceived as a board. Okay? Internal matters are internal matters, okay? And they should be discussed and dealt with in training. Do not put this out there and embarrass our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, honorable board members. Chairman Paulin, Dr. Shimoto. I better keep my comments brief. Uh, as you know, part of our work as an independent organization supporting education in form and community involvement in the Hartford Public Schools involves research. Tonight, I just want to call to your attention our latest report. Uh, building on our summer report on CMT cap scores looking from 2007, 2012, our new report looks at student results from a different angle, the student cohort. This cohort approach tracks the performance of a group of students from grade to grade to see whether they're building on previous year's gains. This is not a comprehensive report or evaluation on the district or even particular schools, nor does it take into account changes related to student attrition and students coming into cohort. But it is a way to learn about the cohort methodology and understand how useful it is, how much value there is in looking at the rate of progress from grade to grade of each student or each grade of student. Couple of things this approach yielded in our analysis. Transition between third and fourth grade remains challenging for many students. So, as we all know the importance of third grade reading, um, getting those kids to a certain level, you don't want to lose those gains, right? You don't want to lose what they've accomplished. Third, fourth grade remains challenging. And interestingly enough, uh, something that's not necessarily consistent with national trends, uh, grade signs, that between fifth and sixth grade, there's a phenomenal jump posted among many, many schools. Something great is happening there, worthy of looking into. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's just a report I hope all of you will pick up and think about. And while many districts, most districts throughout the state of Connecticut are still looking at just year-over-year performance in each graded subject, we think it's really important that we raise our collective sophistication as a community when it comes to looking at data. And to that end, hope that our report generates questions and engages more people in data. Uh, thank you for reading. And, uh, some paper copies were in the back, but they were picked up. Uh, we'll make sure to bring more at the next meeting. Uh, finally, on behalf of our board, directors, and staff, I want to extend a personal invitation to everyone in this room and all board members to join us Friday nights, Theater of the Performing Arts, the Learning Corridor. For our sixth annual Community Spelling Bee, we have a record forty-nine student and adult teams. Almost every high school is represented. People are pumped, people are psyched, people are going to compete. Adult students, it's on. So, uh, just, it's a great night. Bring the kids, um, at seven PM, again, Theater for the Performing Arts, the Learning Corridor, this Friday night. We hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kevin Breckman.
Good evening. It's gonna be hard to gauge my time without seeing Sean Wood and grabbing at the gavel, but I'll try to keep it under the three minutes. I'm tempering my remarks a little bit, because I've... I'm tempering my remarks a little bit because I believe that both of the items I wanted to speak to are in the process of being resolved and have been resolved. First being Quirk and the importance of that to the chief's vision for what he wants to do with the Hartford Police Department. Not just the chief, but also the mayor. I think anybody that's had extended conversations with the mayor understands two of his most important goals are public safety and education. And with Quirk, that's going to play a big role in the public safety aspect. And I also think the board and the school system is missing the boat on that. The time that it's taken to get Quirk to this point, the PAL program is a critical part of that program that the chief wants to put up there. We've got kids that are killing each other every day because of what the chief calls their moral compass, needs to be adjusted. Just as an example, right now, the Hartford PAL program, I think, works with between two and three hundred children, after-school programs, mentoring. But if you go thirty miles west of here to Waterbury, they have a PAL program that's been used as a model across the country. They work with over three thousand kids every year. And just a stark number that can't all be correlated to PAL, but Waterbury has about ten thousand residents less than Hartford, so it's very comparable in size types. Two thousand eight, Waterbury had five homicides, we had thirty-two. So the PAL program is playing a big role in keeping these kids on track from the start. The first night I met Chief Ravella was Thursday before Easter weekend, and we actually met at Quirk. And I didn't want to be rude to him, but as he walked through that building and explaining what he wanted to do with it, I wanted to say, are you nuts? You know, when I saw the state of that building, you walk through plastic-covered doors with asbestos warnings all over the place, plastic sheets in the halls, water damage everywhere, things just falling in. But by the end of that time, I was a believer in his vision for what he wanted to do there. And I think it's critical. And I also think, and I said earlier, you're missing the boat on this. This could be something that could gain national attention, a partnership between the school system, the police department, putting together a PAL program that really works and is saving children's lives from homicides and the shootings and the violence on our streets. The second issue that I wanted to just address quickly was the bonuses. I believe that's been addressed and is off the table now. I just want to say to the superintendent, you know, and this is where I think we have something in common, I've never spent a day in a classroom as a teacher either, but I do remember when my days in school, fifty-six equated to an F. And that was the grade you got on your evaluation. That's a failure. And I would hope that, you know, any private business or any other profession where you're essentially failing half your clients, you wouldn't be asking for bonuses. We're graduating less than fifty percent of our students out of our high schools. That's a failure. And that's something I wish you would remind yourself every day, you're failing half your clients, if not more than half. And when your staff is asking for bonuses, give me a call. I'll take you down any street in the city and introduce you to people who have lost their jobs, have been out of work for two years. We can go to City Hall and ask people who have been laid off and lost their jobs. You know, people should be happy getting a paycheck for doing the job they're hired to without looking for bonuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Dr. Hernán LaFontaine. Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I want to read this because it's much shorter than if I speak about it. So, let me just say, my name is Hernán LaFontaine, I'm the former superintendent of schools, professor emeritus of educational leadership at Southern Connecticut State University, and former president of the Hartford City Council. I introduce myself this way at the risk of sounding modest, only to point out that I have had the unique experience of observing Hartford school systems from various perspectives. Probably the most important is the experience of being a parent of two daughters that attended Hartford Public Schools at Easton Webster, Quirk Middle, and Hartford Public High School. This experience of more than thirty-three years has motivated me to attend tonight's meeting to express my full support for Superintendent Christina Kishimoto's leadership in her effort to improve the educational program for our students in Hartford. I do not hesitate to say that I am completely confident in her ability to achieve necessary feats. I also basically to point out that a significant factor in successfully addressing the many challenges inherent to large urban school systems is to have a board of education willing and eager to form part of a collaborative team with the superintendent. When I look back at the twenty-one years, it's been that long, that have passed since I retired in nineteen ninety-one, I am saddened to realize that there have been more than twelve different individuals filling the position of superintendent during that period of time, including about five persons functioning on an interim basis. That's amazing. You do not have to be an educator at a high level or a management expert to recognize that such constant change of leadership can only lead to instability and lack of productive growth over the years. Dozens of initiatives are virtually doomed to failure as the faculty and students get discouraged to witness the constant victiming and political turmoil that affects the system negatively week after week. It is impossible to adequately describe the cloud of tension and anxiety that threatens to rain out all of one's efforts to continue to labor in the schools under this environment. Eventually, people think about leaving. Fortunately, we in Hartford happen to have a group of experts who are available to us to engage in the challenging work of educational improvement. And I think a lot of people are going to be surprised when I identify those experts as the current members of the Board of Education. Yes, I'm talking about you, community representatives that have volunteered to contribute your time and energy to the role of policy leadership for our school system. I know that many people think that such a role requires expertise and training and credentials in education. I say what it requires is common sense, good judgment, dedication to the cause, and a complete willingness to engage in a good-faith collaboration with the individual who is the recognized education expert, your superintendent, Dr. Kishimoto. I urge you to raise above the level of petty political machinations which have more and more come to dominate every aspect of our lives in general. I urge you to avoid the explosive rhetoric of finding fault and pointing fingers. The city of Hartford needs you to step forward, to work jointly and cooperatively with the superintendent, to focus your energy and valuable experience towards the improvement of our schools. Our city deserves better, our schools deserve better, and our students deserve better. I'm confident that you, superintendent, will become a productive leadership team. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I apologize, I'm going to be taking the contrarian point of view here. I welcome the openness with which you have approached this issue, Dr. Kishimoto, the board. I don't mind seeing the news reports. I don't mind seeing Dr. Kishimoto's attorney's letter. I learned a lot. I don't mind editorials, articles, et cetera. The public learned a lot from this past incident involving performance and involving contractual matters. I applaud openness like this in a board of ed. And I think a perfect example is item number one on your agenda. Item number one came about several months ago. It came out in the press that Quirk was not going to be used any longer for the police efforts, and the police chief was unhappy about that, but was going to move on. And instead, what happened? What happened was there was some behind-the-scenes movement, there was people like myself who came out and spoke at council, and then I followed up here with speaking before you a couple of months ago. And what do we have now? We have a memorandum of understanding, we have movement forward, we went from zero to one hundred because the issue was brought out in the open. Again, I don't mind that these items are brought out in open, and we get to understand both sides. I think it is a poor example, and it is not an example that we want to serve or to have when you have things done behind doors in secret or internally. So again, I would encourage these items to come more before us and out in the open. To that end, I brought a matter to your attention a couple of months ago about the Public Safety Academy. I gave you documentation, I gave you a letter from the city attorney. I sat on a federal panel, which I resigned from recently, involving a federal negotiated agreement to bring more minority hiring to our city police department. When I sat on this board two years ago, we were told that a Public Safety Academy was part of the settlement agreement. It was not mentioned specifically in the agreement as such, but it was certainly part of our negotiations. So, I come here before you asking, would you like me to file a Freedom of Information request? Would you like me to request in letter a report from you? I don't know how you would like it. But I would like to know what happened to the Public Safety Academy that was supposed to open in 2012. Dr. Kishimoto, if there was a better example and you wanted to have a law and government academy, terrific. Could you put forth a report as to why that was better than what we thought was negotiated between this federally-appointed board and the city? And Mr. Mayor, finally, your name is unfortunately one of the parties to this agreement. It would benefit you, sir, as you know, in the city of Hartford, if we had a Public Safety Academy where our children could attend, they could become firemen, policemen, transportation security personnel, homeland security personnel. This is a great gateway to jobs and to our police and fire departments. So please, would one of you call me? I left my number. You can email me however you want. I am asking you, how do we investigate or get more information as to what happened to this Public Safety Academy? If it's morphed into something else, and going forward, what can we expect as far as a law and government academy or a Public Safety Academy that would support and would answer what we are federally required to do? We need to have more minorities in our police department, our fire department, and I thought this was a great gateway to do so. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Joan Taraskowitz, please.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Dr. Kishimoto, board. I am a teacher at Fordham Medical Science Academy, and I came tonight to talk to you about the testing that is going on right now and will be going on for the rest of the year. This is an NWEA testing, excuse me, and I don't think you realize the impact that it has. It's one of those good ideas that just doesn't seem to be working. In order to do the testing, we need to have computers. In order to have the computers, we pull them out of all the classrooms, all of the computer banks, et cetera, except for two exceptions, one where it's an art class that meets computers on a daily basis and a business class. The rest of us have no computers. In order to be able to run those computers and keep them updated, we do not have a technical assistant anymore. He's busy testing every day. We don't have a magnet coach out there bringing in more people from the Androms and from the suburbs because she's so busy with the testing and keeping up with people who haven't taken a test. So we have a real snafu. I've been in education for forty-three years, and let me tell you, trends come, trends go. This testing routine is beginning to be criticized across the country. I have not seen any meta-analysis that shows that testing these children three times this year is going to improve their performance at all. Furthermore, we are a school, what do we call it, an autonomous school. We came from going out and literally dragging kids off the streets, gang members, et cetera, to putting kids into Ivy League schools. We are a feather in your cap. Yet, we are going to lose three months this year of good instruction and traditional instruction because of that testing. You add the CAT test onto it, which screws up another month for us, and now we have disruption for forty percent of our school year. Tomorrow, we're giving SATs. Why the heck kids can't get up on Saturday morning to take an SAT, I don't know. And boy, let me tell you, I was on your side when you didn't pass that. So now, we have that going on, and another SAT in the spring. We have UConn courses where every single class meeting is mapped out. And when we don't meet that, we are not going to meet the criteria of UConn courses, they're not going to pass the UConn exam, it doesn't come from us. And so now, our credibility is going to get down the tubes. So I guess I respectfully requesting that we rethink this, that instead of jumping on a testing bandwagon, the Hartford may be a little forward-thinking and say, what is this going to do, the SAT course? Do we need it? Where do we need it? How much do we really need it? And us as people who are doing well without it, why do we have to do it? Okay? So I'm going to request you rethink that, Paul. Okay? Thank you very much. I do appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Yvette Diana.
Hello again, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm sorry, but I think you guys aren't going to like me after this speech. But hello, my name is Yvette Diana. I am the mother of Manuel González, and Manuel González was a teenager who caused major chaos on I-84 on Christmas Day. My son was a student at Burnes, up in Reno. My son was a student at Burnes School that was re-signed to Reno's Study Academy till June of 2011. While he attended the school, he went through a series of issues that were described as behavior problems and a kid that was out of control. But in reality, Manny was just trying to ask facilitators, monitors, teachers, social workers, gym teacher, and even the custodian for help because he couldn't understand the literature and the schoolwork that was given to him. As time went by, there were more disagreements between Manny and school officials that resulted in his first arrest in school grounds. By the time it was over, he had four arrests in one year. As a result, he was one of those students who was jumped from sixth grade to ninth grade at the age fifteen. He then was sent to Second Chance at Buckley High School with no school records, no curriculum, no monitoring, and no one to support him. When I got to Buckley High School, I asked for a definition of what was Second Chance. I thought that Second Chance was a program that was out to save kids, but it didn't save mine. As a result to this, my son now sits in a massive youth institution. When he attended Buckley High School, he attended it with fourteen-year-olds and twenty-one-year-olds, which, as parents, over and over and over again, described bullying, described drug use, and described gang-related, what they're trying to tell you is that bullying is a form to make a kid into a drug addict. Once again, Second Chance did not work for my Manny. But now, as you already know, and as I told you, he's in a massive, massive youth institution. And I want to tell you that he finally made student of the month, and he's getting the best education ever. And he's getting the best education ever. If you couldn't save my son, work on your reform so you can save somebody else's son. I'm still going to fight for my Manny because he's mine. Over and over, I asked parents in this institution, what got your son here? Some kids are not allowed to go back to school once they commit their first crime. I thought it was the law for a child to get an education to the age of 23. Why they're not allowed back in school? I never understand that. I thought, when I found out that you were the one who was monitoring Second Chance, Latino Studies, Burne's Academy, I was like, wow, I sit in her office and I wanted to encourage you to make changes within the school system. I was not trying to be the bully trying to take over H-Pac. I was just a parent who was just tired. I want to save somebody else's kid, but I'm still going to save mine because you will see Manny Gonzalez graduating from Hartford School stage. No more classifying our kids as inmates, as criminals, as school dropouts. All I actually, Ms. Kishimoto, is the reform. If it's not working, if it's not the H-Pac president, look to Purpose if that's better for you. Look to ASCAM, look to the PEMP, look to NELI because the answer that you don't have, one of them may have for you. The only reason why I took over H-Pac and I fought like hell was because if I can encourage one parent to stand up for their kid, then that's one kid that I saved. Madison Youth Institution has 73 prisoners. Half of those kids, they ain't never coming back because they already committed their first murder. School bullying is a way to turn these kids into drug addicts. My son went wrong and it wasn't me as a parent because any school member would tell you, yeah, we know Ms. Diana. I attended the state of Connecticut Parent Active Program, I attended every program possible. But what let my son down is a reform that didn't work for him. It's thousands of kids out here that are on their way to becoming a criminal. It has to stop now. And it starts by each and one, every one of us as an adult, putting our egos in check and stepping up to the plate and saying, we made a mistake, how do we change it? Because I did it easily with all the investigation that I've done on what failed my son, hired an attorney and filed a major lawsuit to the state of Connecticut. But who's going to suffer? The rest of the kids that I'm trying to save? How do we fix it? Who do we turn to? Mr. Sagata, you have all these programs in place, but have one in place so when those criminals, as everyone describes them, come home, they have a way to build foundation and to build their self-esteem and to have people who can encourage them so that they don't go back. Because the majority of our kids in less than three months are back incarcerated. Enough is enough. And if it isn't H-Pac, if it isn't Purpose, if it isn't Hartford Parent University, then find out who the heck it is because you will not help Manny Gonzalez as a statistic to your dropout stages. It will not happen. And yes, Manny Gonzalez is my son, and I will save him. I saved him from 12 years in prison, and I will save him when he comes home in November. I will, I will promise you each and every one of you back. This is not the first time you're going to see me, this is not the first time you're going to hear from me. I already, I got plans to schedule because I have a presentation. Parents need to wake up. Find whatever funding that you can for these programs that want to help these parents. But most of all, start having parents step up. Don't classify them as Latinos, African-Americans, whatnot. We're all parents regardless of how we stand. And that's all I want to say.
Carmen Rodriguez, the other Carmen Rodriguez, I know we had, I called one up. Oh, Carmen, sorry so much. How could I forget you, Carmen? Good evening, Carmen.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Rodriguez and I live about 20 miles from here. And I've been a resident in Hartford of course 30 odd years. Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, I want to thank you. I know that all of you know about Sintra because we've spoken about it many times. I feel so glad we have been at this for 13 years trying to work with Police Department and trying to bring about changes that we thought needed to be done. It gives me great time to first of all, to read that this says, "Items in Order of Importance." And the first item of importance is a resolution to give the Chief from Doc and prepare a safety, Public Safety Carrier. This is an incredible field right now. It's very complex, but I think there are great rewards for those who follow it. We are there for whatever it needs to be, and I hope that the conversation continues. I'm sorry, Ms. Kishimoto, that I have problems with this. But it helps, let me tell you, when you talk to the Hartford residents and trust them to know a little bit about what they're talking about. So I know this will be a success. I can't wait, I know that Vixia Peterson was up here, she's part of the negotiating committee of Sintra. And we have been, like I said, 13 years working on different issues of public safety. Chief, I'll keep my time because it's late at night, only wants to go home. But thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Chief Peravell.
Good evening. Can I have a new three minutes? Good evening, everyone, Board, Dr. Kishimoto, Mr. Mayor. Hey, thank you very much for even entertaining this, I can't thank you enough. And when I was first dispatched to back to the city, we were here to combat gun violence. And I heard the stories about fork and how bad it was and the surrounding areas. I really didn't believe it, so I researched it with the police computer. And then I did some additional research in and around the neighborhood. That was the toughest, toughest neighborhood in the city. When you're talking about Green Street and Center Street and that portion of Albany, Anna, it was actually a terrible place to live, absolutely terrible. So I did my research. After the first year of being there, calls for service, which are the biggest indicator of what a police department does or doesn't do, dropped, the bottom dropped out of the calls for service. For instance, we had calls for service, 263 dispatches for police officers in a thousand-foot radius. We were down to 60 after three months there, 60. A reduction of over 200 calls, dramatic stuff for police work. And when we move on to the PAL program, these kids are very close to my heart. The Explorer Program and actually the Police Academy that is there. Arguably, our PAL kids are our most at-risk kids. The majority of them are single, they're products of single parents. And those are the parents that I've heard are email after email after email. I have to do something with them because they admire the police, they admire the structure, they admire what Sergeant Medina does with them. She's just great, her heart is just in the right place. Our Explorer's Program, ladies and gentlemen, arguably the beginning of our minority hiring and recruiting for young gals and gentlemen to become police officers, city folks being police officers. What a great thing that is. And it'll dovetail very nicely into the new domestic violence because domestic violence, the police department's been restructured with the help of Mr. Jose Camon Rivas. We're now looking at the children of domestic violence because those are the children that drive our aggravated assaults. Their anger management and their conflict resolution are assaults five and 10 and 15 years down the road. This is such a great endeavor. But you have to look at it as a community investment, that's what it is. You're investing in the community, that Northeast community. And I know you've gotten statewide recognition, we've gotten national-wide recognition for the gun violence reduction. But I sit there and I tell everyone, the Board of Education and the schools are a huge, a huge complement to what we do. We can't do this alone. So I ask you to support this, and we'll do our end of it, and we'll hold it up, our bargain. It'll be a nice facility, it'll be a community facility. And I'm very proud to acknowledge you as partners. On yet another aside, if I may, Dr. Kishimoto, thank you very much. No, thank you very much for the DMC, this district proportion of Minority Contact MOU that you just signed. As soon as it hits my office, I'm going to get that signed and into effect. That was just huge on our agenda, and I'm glad we could accomplish it even tonight. So thank you very much, thank you very much for your time, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you, Carmen, thank you. Thank you. And thanks to everyone for their comments tonight. It's an important part of this process that we're engaged in together. My report tonight is really a simple one. And it is that the superintendent and the Board of Education are focused on the same thing. We can't promise you in public service that everything will go like a symphony. It's not going to happen. And for the American democratic system to be successful, sometimes democracy is messy. Sometimes democracy has disagreements, and we learn from those disagreements. And we at least hope we learn from the disagreements. And I know that I can say that the Board, the Board and the Superintendent have gone through a difficult series of weeks. But we are committed to the growth of our school system, to the success of our children, to the importance of reform. And you're hearing that from me, not from the media, not from an editorial, but you're hearing it directly from me. This Board is focused on working for the same effort that our Superintendent is involved in. So however you get your news, whatever you read in the newspaper, whoever tells you what you think you should know, know from tonight that we are committed to reform to our children and to making this partnership work. And that's the end of my report. And I'd like to turn it over to a real report from the Superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. I have a couple of things we're going to cover. I want to start first with the year-end financial report as of June 30th of 2012. And I'm asking Paul Alterio, Chief Financial Officer, to walk us through that year-end report. Thank you, Paul.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So in your board packet, you'll find the financial report for the period ending June 30th of 2012. I'm going to go through some of the highlights of our fiscal year-end. For the 12-month period ending June 30th of 2012, we have expended a total of $283.99 million or 99.99% of the 2011-12 general budget of $284 million. We closed the fiscal year with a general budget positive surplus of $21,100. The final variances are as follows. We did have a positive variance in salary accounts totaling almost $58,000 or 0.11% of salary budgets. The positive variance is attributable to favorable severance liabilities of $71,262 in addition to $86,513 in salary savings resulting from attrition. We had a slight negative variance in professional contracts and services of $45 over the professional services budgets. We had a positive variance in purchased property service accounts of $526,649 or 5.2% of the purchased property service budgets. Now, the vast majority of this positive variance, 95% of it, is attributable to the variance in rental of facility accounts. As we've reported during our previous quarterly reports, the rental of facility account was forecasted to have a positive variance at the end of the year resulting from the funding of the temporary swing space of empty fonts through the school construction grant. The remaining 5% of the variance is attributable to facility maintenance and repairs and savings associated with some of those contracts. We did have a negative variance in our system-wide purchase service accounts of about $683,000 or 1.15% of the purchase service budgets. And the negative variance is twofold. We had a negative variance of a little over $717,000 in our special education out-of-district tuition budgets. Throughout the years, we have struggled with outplacements and this year unfortunately was no different in that. The negative variance was offset by a favorable savings of $34,166 in budgets such as communications, advertising, printing, travel, and miscellaneous other service budgets. We have a positive variance in supplies and materials in the utility accounts of $108,408 or 7.5% of those budgets. The positive variance is twofold here again. If you look at utilities budgets, we had a $1.2 million positive variance in utilities offset by a negative variance of $116,373 in instructional materials, text, and library books. We do have a negative variance in capital outlay of $157,430 or almost 8.6% over the equipment budget. And the negative variance is attributable to computer refreshes and upgrades at some of our schools. A positive variance in other miscellaneous expenses totaled $22,768 or approximately 1.8% of miscellaneous expense budgets. Two more, a final positive variance in our fringe insurance totaled just about $4.1 million or about 8.8% of the fringe budgets. And we'll take a look at this when we get to page four of that and take a look at the drivers impacting that. In the final category here on general budget is a negative variance in inter-fund transfers of $5 million. And due in large part to a favorable fiscal year here, we were able to reimburse the city of Hartford for $5 million in in-kind services. These are services provided by the city of Hartford at a cost to the city of Hartford on behalf of the Hartford Public Schools. And those are items such as the Corporation Council, which supports the Hartford Public Schools, school crossing guards, which support our safe transport of our students throughout our streets. As part of this agreement, I'd also like to mention that the mayor along with the city council have passed an appropriation of $2 million for renovations to the CIP for the Milner Jamoki Academy. So I'll take questions here. If there are no questions, I'm going to proceed to give you a summary of fringe benefits.
I don't really wanna ask a question, but I just say, in a budget of $284 million, you ended up with a positive variance. There's always a positive variance, there's a negative variance, there are always big figures, and you've ended up with a positive variance of $21,500. Thank you very much, Dr. Fisher.
I just have a comment. I too wanna congratulate you. You know that even though we get budgets, we always have these internal operating deficits and not only will we be able to achieve the goals, but also to be able to put some money towards funding our internal operating accounts. Just this morning, we've been doing some work over the last three years. When I took office, there was $17 million deficit on the internal operations account and now we're on the positive by millions. This additional money that's being put into the internal service account will hopefully get us to get closer so that we're adequately funding this account. So thank you on that work.
I won't say I'll take the thanks for it. It's a part of a district collaboration, you know, led by our superintendent. So, thank you. All right, on to the fringe benefits, just to have a look at that. If you turn to page four in your packet, you'll notice the fringe benefit summary. And if you look at the first set of categories, revenue and expenses make up the fringe benefits. You'll notice that revenue has decreased here in our fringe benefit accounts by $478,405. And you can see here that even though we've had positive revenue growth in our employee contributions and subsidies of approximately $650,000, our reimbursements from our special funds grants, even though it was higher than last year or less than we had anticipated that they would be. Last year, our actuals were $16.6 million from reimbursement from special funds. We estimated that we could potentially have up to $20.6 million. We came close, but we ended around $19.5 million. So despite the increasing revenue growth in employee contributions and subsidies, the special funds contribution going down, we had $478,405 less revenue to support the overall surplus. So it did drop the surplus a little bit. So if you look at the lower category, employee insurance, we had a very strong year in our employee insurance. We had 4% less claims and budget over what we had expected. We ended the fiscal year at $58.652 million for a surplus in employee insurance of $2.446 million. And I'd like to note that it is especially encouraging that if you look at our last year's actuals, we're only about $99,000 above where we were last year. In the country, we're seeing double-digit increases in healthcare. I think that speaks to our level of discipline and I hope that's a sign that our employees are getting healthier and we're moving in the right direction. So I was very encouraged by those year-end results. A couple other noteworthy exceptions here is workers' comp. We also had a decrease over what we were anticipating the budget to be. We had a budget of $2.4 million. We ended just under $2.2 million for about a $221,000 surplus. And our other two big winners of encouragement, our unemployment compensation claims are going down. And I know in this market, I'm hopeful that it means that some of our employees have found other employment opportunities. So I'm always hopeful that that is the answer to that. And property and liability insurance is our other big winner here, and we estimated about $1.98 as a budget. We ended up at $1.4 million for a surplus of $564,000. So overall, in expenses, we had $4.5 million in surplus in our fringe accounts, offset by fortunately our decreases in our revenue. And we had a strong finish of just about $4.1 million overall in our fringe accounts. So very, very encouraging. And our last report in our package is our special funds budget. And that's, if you turn to that, the final special funds year-end report shows total grants received of $126.6 million, with total expenditures of $116.3 million for an ending balance of $10.3 million, or 8% carryover of grants received. Now, I did wanna mention that there are, for transparency purposes, a few grant variances in which funds have lapsed. We have five different grants on here. The state magnet operating, $32,507 out of the $4,000 plus million that we do get in funding. So most of the fund lapses are a result of instructional supplies a little bit left on each of the school's balances. The most significant one here is Carl Perkins of $118,316, or 21% of the grant funds. Department of Health Services, $85. School readiness funds, we had about $48,593. And a small balance left in our IDEA carryover of $3,754. And that concludes my report this evening. If there are any further questions involved, I'll certainly be happy to answer them if I can.
Well, thank you very much. I think we are, certainly as the superintendent and my team are very pleased with how we have managed our funds and aligned them to our priorities. The Board played an incredible role in that ongoing conversation and monitoring of our district's budget to make sure that it is aligned with the strategic approaches that are important to moving this district forward. And so I think we are certainly pleased where we ended our year. So thank you to Paula and her team for their ongoing work that they do as well. Thank you very much. The next part of the presentation's gonna be very quick, it's a little more on the lighter side. And I'll start by thanking everyone in orange t-shirts who are here kinda showcasing this work. This is so exciting. We had, Enid is clapping for everyone here. We have a choice marketing campaign that we have started to roll out. This was a goal that we had set several years ago, particularly one to two years ago, to really pull together our entire marketing approach for both regional choice, Hartford choice, and all of the options that our families have into one cohesive message and marketing campaign. Then we'll go through this very quickly because Brad Noel and her Choice of Facilities Committee took a look at this more in depth earlier. What was the last week we met on that, Brad, right? And so I just wanna showcase where we are a bit on this. There are a number of goals that we've set to make sure, one, that we capitalize on the state capital portfolio district excellence, vision statement that really is driving our work and really represents who we are as a district. We also wanted to make sure that we had that integrated message about who we are as a community of schools, a portfolio of schools across the board that provides lots of wonderful options for our families and puts school choice in their hands. We also wanted to make sure that there was some clear messages and communication around the opportunities that our families have in moving in those transitional periods from one grade level to the other. And we also wanted to finally look at ensuring that our marketing and our messaging was appropriate to everyone who is represented in our parent community, which in a district that also has regional choice options, includes both our Hartford residents and suburban families that choose to participate in the wonderful selection of schools we have here in Hartford. One of the important pieces of how we came up with this marketing campaign was to include lots of voices in building this message together. And so there was this discovery phase in which there were a lot of parents, teachers, students, administrators, community members who were part of helping us to pull together this vision and to focus our approach here in terms of how we communicate who we are as a Hartford public school. And one of the important things is, as you know, as a community, we recently rolled out this new tagline, which includes where the future is present. And so what we focused on moving forward with this work was on this concept of the future. Because all of our work as educators and partners and parents in this community is really around ensuring the best for our children in their future success in all of their school options, even beyond the Hartford Public Schools and to college and career choices. And so I think there you have it, right? It's the future. And so we went with our focus on this message about the future. And everything that we are rolling out and have started to roll out connects back to this concept of the future. And so there is a guide that's being developed in multiple languages for our families that really walk them through all of their options in our Hartford Public Schools. There is visual representation to facilitate walking our parents through the process of school selection. We also have, in which we are kinda branding our materials for magnet, open choice, and district choice options. And so we have consistency in how we are using language across all of our brochures. And we have a series of advertisements that we would do that has this consistent brand and approach and language. And here are some examples of ways in which we will be using this kind of branding platform to talk about family and student empowerment in terms of school choice. And so we want, so very quickly, just two other matters. We had our first regional school choice fair this past Saturday. It was competing with the Hartford Marathon and a parent forum, but it was very exciting to roll that out. And so we are going in very quickly into school choice mode. And certainly, this is one of those things where we're starting school, a few weeks later, we're already talking about school choice. And our families have lots of opportunities to get information about that. The other is that we had our first superintendent-led parent forum this past Saturday. And I thank Dr. Nieves, who's the president of Capital Community College, who hosted us at Capital Community College. I'm holding three forums with parents, and I'm holding all three of them on college campuses to encourage parents to come and see the college campuses. And the theme of these forums is around how you can prepare your child now to be college and career ready. So I met this past Saturday with parents who are parents of children from pre-k to third grade, and we talked about how you can prepare children at that very age to start thinking about college and career in an age-appropriate way. We also had a great opportunity to do a brief reading on a children's book, Antonia Soto-Major, Chief Justice who appointed to the Supreme Court. It's very exciting to provide also culturally appropriate reading materials that really engage the families and really get you to know their larger communities. So with that, I end my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much, Dr. Fishmoto. Now, we'll go on to committee reports. First, a report from the Finance and Audit Committee. Mr. Wery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Audit Committee met on Monday, the 24th. We discussed in detail the abbreviated financial report that you just heard from Isolte Ari. All in all, it was a good year fiscally and I think we are, you know, we are in sound fiscal shape, at least in the near term, and we'll be able to meet our obligations, our challenges going forward, which we've talked about in the past. But 2012, 2011, 2012 was a successful year and was well-managed, and Isolte Ari and the superintendent deserve a lot of credit for that. We also discussed some challenges upcoming in this fiscal year, first of which is transportation, which is always an issue. We could hope to achieve a $2.6 million savings over last year's budget of transportation amount in this fiscal year. We're holding to that relatively well and projecting out at the moment $2.3 million in savings, which is not quite what we hoped for, but still a good number. We've had good numbers so far on our pension and other employee benefits. The actuaries have been kind to us, and I think we are probably gonna realize some significant savings there that we hadn't anticipated, which is good because I do think there are some challenges in the transportation area where we may not be able to achieve some of the savings we hoped for. And there are always other contingencies. And of course, at the end of the year, we'd like to be able to send money back to the city to help them and also to get some capital improvements, things we'd like to have done. On Thursday, this coming Thursday, Isolte Ari and I are sitting down to talk about transportation and transportation costs. This is something that has to be managed closely because it really could get away from us. And it's an area where I think we could really do well in terms of capping costs. And we'll also be discussing, I think, at the next finance committee meeting, in addition to normal things. We'll probably will talk a little bit about the current grant, probably the recent report that numbers, it'll be small, a little into the size of the grant, but that one seemed significant. I think there's some reason for that, a little more. It's not a huge dollar amount, but you know, when you hand back 50% of something, you'd like to understand why. That concludes the reporting. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wery. Now, a report from the Human Resources Committee, Jose Clonar Rivas.
Yes, the Human Resources Committee met on October 15th to discuss the hiring process for principals in our district. We had an extremely proactive and healthy discussion. We'll not go into details, but areas discussed, or the guidelines that we're utilizing in our system, timeline, the process, and challenges and next steps. We truly believe we have a strong process for hiring our administrators. We truly appreciate the work that each school governing team is doing and the work of all the parents who are involved within this team. I mean, it is extremely important. But not only we're looking at the process as an entry process, we would like to understand also the exit process. Why are principals leaving our system? And this is something that we're actually working together with administration, just to make sure that we have a better understanding on the areas or indicators that are out there. It's our core of our data collection in regards to exit processes. The HR committee makes some recommendations for administration in looking at other exiting policies in other districts such as NOR, New Jersey, in terms of the hiring process for teachers, the exiting processes for teachers, hiring process for principals, and exiting processes for principals as well. We would really like to learn and collect the data and have a better understanding of the transit and what's happening in the system. And that concludes all of it.
Thank you, Dr. Clonar Rivas. Any questions? Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to turn to my colleague, Robert Cotto, for a presentation about policy committee.
And all that sort of thing. But again, it's a bit premature to commit to anything, obviously, but we're gonna get a report back on that. Dr. Nardone also gave a report, and this might interest the public. We got a report on which schools have logos on their uniforms and which schools do not have logos on their uniforms, and how much individual pieces of each uniform per each school. It's a very interesting document that we had. So again, we'll be meeting next month to look that over. And this comes as a result of parents coming forth to the Board with some concerns about uniform policy and the cost, particularly when they have many children.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Cotto. And Mrs. Noel, the School Building and Facilities Committee?
Yes, I did. Thank you. That was our end.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Fishamoto. Really said a little bit about the topic that we had at our meeting, which of course is the future is coming soon to a near school and all of those, most of those people with their orange shirts have left, but this is the...
What?
And I think that we've heard enough already tonight to realize that Hartford Public Schools are a system of choice. And that puts tremendous responsibility on the parents, and we heard it from a lot of parents this evening. I remember when my children started Hartford Public Schools, there was no question of where they were going to go to school, because there was a neighborhood school, and they went to the neighborhood school and got good, very good educations. I'm not complaining, but I think the responsibility on the shoulders of parents is to investigate all the choices. And it's, it's a bit, you know, it's a little overwhelming, even for someone like myself who's been around and worked 22, 25 years in the school system. I went on Saturday to Prince Tech for the first of the fairs, and we're talking about the magnet school fairs, but we're also talking about choice, when students can enroll in neighborhood town schools. But we're, we also are going to have the, this campaign for Hartford, choosing Hartford Public Schools. So again, it's not just a matter of, oh, your neighborhood school is XYZ school, so that's the school your child goes to. No, you are, you have choices, and you want to, in fact, you need to, to educate yourself as parents to know and to make the choices, because when you say, oh, like, I'd like my child to visit, go to this school, one, you're going to have to do applications, and two, the school is going to say, well, now, have you visited our school? Do you really know what our school is like if you're going to send your child to the school? So parents, be prepared. This is fascinating to visit schools. I love to visit schools, and I think that for parents, don't, don't feel that you're not wanted, because you should be visiting schools to make this, to make this decision. And there is a myriad of choices. So as I said, the, this program is only getting started. That's another big, you'll get a big push on that coming up. But in the meantime, if many of you, I guess there were number hundreds of parents that were at the fair at Prince Tech, and there are, there's going to be another fair at Trinity in December 15th, and another one at SNSA on the 12th of January. So I guess my message is to parents, get involved and help your child make very, very good decisions. And I appreciate your comments about you start when they're babies, because vocabulary, 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 and using words is so important. So talk to your children. Talk to them about all sorts of things, because that's how they build, help them build their vocabulary, so they come to preschool not at a disadvantage, but on par. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Noel. Any questions? Back to you, Mrs. Noel, for the School Choice and Facilities Committee. You get two of them tonight. You have two of them tonight, School Building and School Choice.
Well, the other, I can see really just had one committee meeting.
Oh, you just had one? Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
No.
Any other, any other committees? No? Okay. We're going to move into the business agenda of the meeting, and...
Yes.
Oh, no, we're going into the business agenda. All right. Hey, it's only quarter after eight. We've been here for a while. The first agenda item is the approval to turn Cork West to the City of Hartford for use by the Hartford Police Department. The resolution is to, is that the Hartford Board of Education approves turning over Cork West to the City of Hartford for use by the Hartford Police Department.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Yes. I, I have a couple of things that I want to bring up about this item. I have some concerns about it, not with the overall nature of the school and the police department working together. I think I have more concerns with the process, that we often talk as a board about things being done, and, you know, we'll say that, you know, we're not pleased that something was done, and it wasn't vetted by the school governance council, that there weren't public forums held. I remember when we made a move to close Martin Luther King, and we backed up off of that because the parents hadn't been informed of, you know, what the plans entailed. And I think that oftentimes when we take the opportunity to speak with parents, to explain to them exactly what this is going to entail, the concept seems to be a great concept, but exactly what are the details of it? And I'm saying this because my son is sitting back there right now, who goes to Global Communications Academy, and one of the reasons why he's there is because I bought into the fact that he was going to go to Quirk, and they were going to have access to this school and access to all of these facilities. So it's not spelled out for me as a parent exactly what this agreement is going to entail and exactly how that relationship is going to work. And so those are my concerns. I, you know, I, I understand safety issues and, and I'm just kind of, you know, there are a lot of questions that I have about this with regard to the new police department being built a couple of blocks that way, and then police substation a couple of blocks that way, the need for Quirk. But however, again, for me, it's more process, more information as to exactly what this is going to look like and how it's going to play out. And because, like I said, my child is there, I don't like uncertainty, like, well, we'll work it out down the line. That, for me, is not comforting.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor? I was not a member of the Board of Education when the decision to abandon the school was made years ago, so I don't know what type of a process the board had to invite the community to feel, you know, to ask them how they felt about the closing of the school. So I'm not quite sure what, what process was, was had, but I do know that once the building became vacant and there appeared to be no plans for its use, we moved to try to at least enter into a lease agreement to accommodate the shooting task force and some other programs that, as the chief indicated, had significantly, significantly reduced the crime in that area. So as we open up this facility, I don't know how much we're spending on Global Academy, but I would assume that we want to have a safe neighborhood, that we have a place where we can continue to do things that invite construction. There's someone that's investing across the street to actually build a house, three-family house that's going to pay taxes. But more importantly, aside from the issue of process, which again, not too clear on, you know, why the school was commissioned, I know that the new plans for the new school did not seem to encompass, and that the school was submitted as an application that basically was freestanding. Having said that, I think that whatever we do, that we need to have a memorandum of understanding that affords the students, as Ms. Smith had requested before one of the parents, that requires joint use of the recreational facilities, because I don't think that, I think that the request is that the school would be much better off having those amenities right next door. So, so that I would, I would definitely support and ask for to be, and it is part of the resolution. But more importantly, I think that working together is oftentimes in Hartford, a new concept. And I think people are going to have to learn how to share.
Exactly.
People are going to have to learn that if we really want to move our community forward, the different systems are going to have to work together to impact the lives of people, that the education system doesn't work in isolation from the police department, doesn't work in isolation from the health department, doesn't work in isolation, because ultimately it all comes from that one tax dollar that is given by the taxpayers towards the city. So we have to learn how to share resources, really solve on this collaborative impact model, so that we can work together to try to address problems, and I think that this will provide a good opportunity. Looking forward, I also see this facility as a place that will start to house different components that will be very useful in terms of lowering youth violence. And just yesterday, we submitted a grant to the state. We're going to be getting $750,000 for the next 18 months for different programs that are, impact youth, youth violence. And one of those is working with, as the chief had indicated, the issues of domestic violence, because a lot of our youth that are getting into problems in, in their lives are the product of homes in which there has been domestic violence. So we hope to use that as one of the programs, continue to expand the power program. But more importantly, my hope is that over the next couple of years, and we've already started this, the superintendent has already started an incubator class at the Hartford Long Government Academy, to begin to build each and every year our public safety academy complex. The public safety academy complex, and I hate to go on, because all these different pieces are related, we've not forgotten about the fact that we need to have a public safety academy for our city. In fact, we budgeted $10 million to support that effort. At one point, we were hoping that in order not to present another request to the state for the building of a public safety academy, that we can tag along with Craig's proposal for the building of a public safety academy, and we tried to have that be built in Hartford. Unfortunately, that did not succeed. The superintendent and I and others had a discussion about at least starting a class of 40 that we can continue to build up. So this place will also enable us to consider how we get partnerships growing, so that we can really create a pipeline from elementary school all the way through high school and into college and into our police department. The workforce analysis that were done about, related to our police department and our fire department, seems to indicate that there will be opportunities there for employment in years to come. We have a workforce that will continue to retire, creating opportunities, but we also know that we need to reach our children young, so that they know the importance of not picking up a police record, so that they get socialized. And we also want to use the facility as a place that creates further partnerships between the community and the police department and others. So we hope to enter into a partnership with the YMCA as well, who doesn't have a swimming pool, and share those facilities with them as well. So there's a lot of good programming that can go on in this facility, and I think, but more importantly, I think that we really need to continue to build on our demographic studies, our capital improvement plans, so that we know exactly and get some clarity over the next couple of years, where we're going to have permanently housed public safety academy, which is very important. So, so I think that for now, it's basically going to be the police training academy. Unfortunately, when the decision was made to build a new public safety complex, the mayor Peters funded what, through the ballot, bond ordinance vote, what was thought back then to be a sufficiently large police complex, but it cannot accommodate all the different components of the police department. Actually, the square footage of the new public safety complex is, is actually the same square footage as the old one. So that's not the same thing that I made, but obviously, we needed to move forward. So we do, we are going to need additional space, but I'm, I'm very proud and very confident of the progress that has been made in that facility thus far, and I think that in the future, we're going to see good things coming out of that. And again, I'm sure the students want to have the use of the facilities, and we're just going to have to work together, the MOU that guarantees that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further comment? Mr. Mayor?
I was on the board when we first discussed the global studies, a K through 12 school at that one part of Quirk Public School. And we recognized that the gym and the swimming pool and so on were in the other part of the building. And yet, the reality is that state reimbursement is based on a formula, which I don't remember, but I don't, the numbers don't count, but the formula is a certain number of students per square foot. And therefore, to add that part of the building to the grant for the number of students from Global, we could not do that. So that is, that is, that's the reason that this, the building was separated. And unfortunately, I mean, I think it's a travesty, and you know, it's particularly the swimming pool, because I'm a big swimmer, but that, that the auditorium and then the gym and the pool facilities are in the other part of the building, and, and they are not going to be and cannot be part of the Global school as it is. And so, but what, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be working on trying to build facilities, and I think we talked about it at the time. Are there some other groups that can fund those facilities so that Global students can use it? And I hope that, that our fellow board member and other parents at Global keep fighting for physical activity for children. As I want to ask, we talk about the playing field, and for years, I drive by the playing field, there was this big open field that almost never, nobody used. Right now, it is full of piles of dirt. What is that all about? Can somebody tell me?
I can. Playing fields are a part of the construction project. They're being prepared and leveled appropriately so that they can be, the students, but that'll be, that'll be the last part of the project. They're holding the dirt right now, but that's also part of leveling. They're, they're well-designed for students.
I knew there was an answer. Thank you.
So skiing is not, it's not, it's going to happen, it's not skiing that's going to go on there, on that mountain.
So I just wanted to be clear and get it on the record. So currently, the police, Hartford Police Academy, the Police Explorer, and the Police Activity League are at the school and that portion of the school right now. Is that correct?
A portion of it.
A portion of, a portion of what, sorry?
A, a portion of that building space, yes.
A portion of the building, okay. So if we, if we decided, had this resolution not even come up, they would still be there? Is that correct?
No, we, we were working under, is that, is it okay for me to cloud some information? We were, we had a MOU, memorandum of understanding with the police department. I believe that expired almost a year ago now. Is that correct? Or maybe a little less than a year ago? In June, in June. June of 2012. We had some initial plans. We were exploring two options. One was looking at whether opportunity high, which needed a permanent space, whether we should look at building out that space potentially for a school that would need a non-lease space to move them into an existing building. We looked at other options like high school wing, which is also a lease space. We were doing some explore, exploring of schools that are lease spaces, potentially use that. We ultimately came up with a plan to put special ed programs in that space, and then there was an interest in retaining this space for the police department.
Okay. So what, if I could just be clear, so what you're saying is there, there were plans to have another series of programs possibly there? Is that, is that...
There were, with the idea of having, since it was built out as an edu, since it's a school building, with the concept of, of having another educational facility, program in there in order for the common spaces like auditorium, gymnasium, and pool to be shared spaces between that educational program and Global that was going in next door.
All right. Thank you. I have a few, just another comment. My, my concern is the following, and I have, you know, I think it's fantastic that we're sharing and that sort of thing, and the police can have a presence in the neighborhood, I think that's fantastic. And I do have some ideas for alternative spaces as well, but my concern was in the, in the resolution. My understanding was that this was a temporary situation, that the police department would be using this part of the building temporarily. And in this resolution, it says for an indefinite period of time, and that, that concerns me as a, as a member of the school board. You know, I don't, I don't have any city functions. I don't, my, my duty is to the school board, and the school's not to the police department, although I think it's fantastic that we work together, and we could, we need to continue to do that. I would have liked to have seen as to when, you know, when this ends, or when this, you know, when this thing finishes, because, you know, as they say, what is it? you know, when this thing finishes, because, you know, as they say, 90% of ownership is being there, right, is occupation, that sort of thing. If we release this in this way, I feel like it's gone from our school system to a certain extent. Maybe, maybe I'm a little being a bit over cautious about this, but I think that's, that's one of my concerns, is that we kind of release it, and it's not part of the school system anymore, right? So I guess I'm not comfortable personally moving forward with this particular resolution, although I want to collaborate with the Police Department and work with them, and obviously, they're there, so we can continue to use the facility. But I feel like it needs to be fleshed out a little bit more as to what the plan is moving forward. Because let's say, let's say, two months from now, or three months from now, we need a space, right? We're a school system, and things happen, and buildings, buildings fall apart all of a sudden, right? These sort of, we need a space, what are we going to do, right? Anyway, so that's my concern. I would offer, I have two, two suggestions, not to be, you know, Debbie Downer here about the whole thing, but two suggestions. We have a YMCA facility with a pool, a gym, a residential area on Main, it's on Main Street, it's on, where is that?
Broad.
Broad, no, no, it's on.
Albion, Jewel Street.
Jewel Street, Jewel Street, City, completely empty. There's a space. Global Communications, those kids are going to be moving out of Fox Middle School next year. There's a pool, I don't know if there's a gym, there's a cafeteria, there's a gym. They can take that other half of the space with the private school over there that we gave half the school to. We can put, we can put the Police Department over there. I guess I'm just thinking like, there's other, there's other options that are out there. So I'll leave it at that, and hopefully, you know, whatever happens, we'll have some more details moving forward.
Any further comment?
I just wanted to compromise instead of for an indefinite period, for saying this contract is to be reconsidered in a year, or two years, or even three years. I mean, indefinite period is going to be beyond my time on Hartford Board of Education. And to, you know, is to give the time that this would be brought up again to be reconsidered. Just changing that one phrase, and I'm not saying do it next week, but indefinite period for, for two years to be reconsidered at that time.
I've explored that option. I will be getting, as mayor, a request for capital construction of schools during budget time, and I think that's the best time for the school board to present the mayor's office with a plan for the construction of schools, because I have a little bit of difficulty with any particular, whether it's the Police Department, or the School Department, or any city department, to just have the flexibility of unloading buildings that they don't want when they don't want them. And we don't have a choice as a city to say, we don't want it back, we have to take it. We have a couple of those already. So I think that the best way to strategically plan the construction of schools and the funding of the construction of schools, and I think in given, given life of what the superintendent has been working on, along with the state for high reimbursement for construction of schools, that we're much better situated to sort of plan. But I think that, given what that neighborhood saw of 30 years of consecutive increase in crime, that it's time that we take some control and do something that's just not a patch-up for two years, that we make sure that we show that we have a commitment to working together to make that neighborhood crime-free.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, a fellow board member, Lori, you brought up the point about use of the facilities. So is it the case that there's a guarantee that Global Communication will be able to use the facilities? Is it just a question of iron, iron, ironing out the details of that? And are there any risks of there being such conflict that the children still don't get to take advantage of those facilities?
I would say, we, all of the above, but also, I just wanted to clarify that aside from the questions that I have surrounding this particular item, I think outside of this item, if this were an item for XYZ, my concern is that the process that we normally utilize in terms of engaging the community and the parents, that that wasn't done. So that's my first issue, that we don't forget to do that when we do items like this, because these are, you know, you've heard all the parents this evening saying, we're here, we're a part of this, you know, as Sam Saylor said, you know, we own this. And so I think that, not to say that it would be voted down, or, or that someone's against it, but mainly the involvement and the engagement didn't take place. And then again, yes, to that point, what exactly are the details? So I think that's the issue. And if I could say, you know, maybe we need to look at the dates, and maybe, you know, looking at our agreement and what we want to do, what we would like to see happen, but just put more meat on it so that it's spelled out more clearly. I think that would, you know, put a lot of people at ease, that okay, this is what we're going to do going forward, this is the collaboration that we want to have, and this is exactly how it's going to work. And I think that that, you know, we could, you know, present, and, and parents could be comfortable with that.
Dr. Kishimoto, any additional insight around those issues? Or not necessarily, particularly in terms of assuming the, let's say, pass this resolution, that there's confidence that the partnership around ensuring access to the facilities will not be an issue, and that ongoing engagement with the parents, students at Global Communication Academy, and the process for really revealing the details around the MOU will be in place.
Well, I think all of, all of that work is work that I can certainly ensure occurs. I, I think the question on the table was around whether that should have happened first before the item was presented, but because we have gotten so much feedback from the community about how the order in which we do some of these items from other projects out in the community in that same general area. The, the commitment that we had made collectively was to give access to these 1,000 students who are in this other building, which would be the ID Global Communications Academy, to those spaces. I think that those details still need to be worked out, but I think it's important to assure, ensure, assure the community that we are in fact committed still to ensuring access for those 1,000 students during the school day to those, to those portions of the facility that are important to their education process. The, the construction project and grant and the public vetting of that construction project was done with the assumption that those kids were going to have access because of, there would be some matchup of educational opportunities. Now we're talking about doing that matchup with a non-educational entity, which can still be done, but it, we have to just, I think that, you know, what we need to ensure the communities that that commitment is still there.
And I will instruct, at least on the Corporation Council side, that any agreement has to be structured around the issue of providing access for those 1,000 students to the athletic and swimming facilities that are in that building. That has to be the prime. So, you know, my hope is that at some future point, and we, the superintendent and I have discussed this, at some future point, that might present the best place upon which to build a Public Safety Academy, at which point we can have to basically convey the property back, but, you know, I have to sort of, or my mayor have to make a decision as to what the best possible use would be for at least the time being and into the future. And at this point, I think that this is the best resolution.
Any other comments?
I would like to make a motion that we maybe table this until we can spell out the details and then bring it back so that we can vote and feel confident with everything being spelled out. You know, the dates, you know, what the agreement would be as best of our ability to determine and then vote upon it, because I'm still feel like I'm going to be voting on something that's not. And, you know, that's been something that we, as a board, had issues with, having to vote on stuff that we're not sure about. And if we would table this tonight, fill in the meat, fill in the details, and then we can bring it back, and then maybe even engage the parents at the school. I think they would love to hear about what the Powell's program has to offer, the things that it would provide for the children in the school and the neighborhood. But I think hearing all of those details, people can go away also in support of the program.
And, and, you know, and that's the reason why I tabled this resolution for about four months. This resolution was pending before us four months ago.
So I, because we have a process here, there are two things on, on the docket that I hear. I'm assuming, Mrs. Noel, you want to make an adjustment to the language about the, the dates and the indefinite amount of time, and you have a separate resolution to table it entirely. So I think, you know, why don't we take the issue of tabling? Are you making the motion to table, to table this?
Until we can, until we can actively, as a board, agree to, we have this resolution, agree to the dates and agree to the facility, the use of the facility.
Do I hear a second? Any further discussion? They have a vote on tabling the Cork resolution that's before us. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
All in favor of opposing, or all that oppose?
Nay.
Nay. Mrs. Noel?
I would like to see the change of the time, just that if we can do that, then I can make it, I think if I make a motion, then we change the, the section that says if we're an indefinite period of time, and I, I have got a specific time, but is there something that's a time limit that the city would be? I, I don't want to, you know, make it a handicap to the Police Department, but I think it would be helpful because for an indefinite period is, is pretty extensive.
Okay, but I think we're going to need to make a, a resolution. We have to replace it with.
To, to, for, for a period of two years to, to be reconsidered at that time, or one year to be reconsidered at that time?
Which, which one?
I would say more than, of course, it needs more time to, but I would say indefinite, but definitely three or four years.
Okay, that definitely. I'd say, I'd say two years, let's say indefinite period of two years to be reconsidered.
There's a motion on the table to change the amount of time associated with this resolution from an indefinite period of time to two years. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Coto? The motion was for a three-year period?
Two, two years.
Two-year period? I think, I think that, that allows people some time to work things out, but I, I think I'm somewhat convinced by Ms. Hudson's argument that, that there is something to be said about process and about engaging, for instance, the School Choice and Facilities Committee, and/or the, and/or the SGC at the, at the school. So I think at this point, I would, I'm not comfortable moving forward with it.
Any, any further questions about the length of time? All in favor of changing the resolution from an indefinite period of time to two years? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Did you get the count? Did everyone vote? The motion didn't pass, correct? Didn't, didn't pass. Just looking for the number. You didn't get the count?
I couldn't tell.
Could we do it again, please? All in favor of the motion to move to a two-year from an indefinite period of time? All in favor?
Two years.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Didn't pass, correct? It did not pass. So now, we're, we're back to the original, original of resolution to approve the turnover of Cork West to the City of Hartford for use by the Hartford Police Department. Any, any final comments? Hearing none, may have a vote, all in favor of that resolution?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
The resolution passes. Thank you. Mr. Coto abstains. The, the next resolution is about enrollment policies at Milner School. I would like to, to table this resolution until our next board meeting, and the reason to do that is because we do not have sufficient information from the state and from the Commissioner to even argue this point. And the Commissioner has agreed to work with the school board and the superintendent to get clarity around this, and again, we're not tabling it indefinitely. It's tabled until next month. All in favor? Oh, excuse me, any discussion?
We have to, we have to bring the motion forward.
Okay.
And then, then someone has the motion to table it. I could be wrong. No?
Didn't I raise it to table? Somebody seconded it.
You didn't?
Okay, somebody seconded it, so any discussion?
Okay, yes, discussion, thank you. I would like to speak on this issue. I, I just wanted to thank, first of all, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Poland, I just wanted to have a chance to absolutely thank some of my colleagues here. Ms. Brad Noel and Mr. Colon Rivas brought this issue up. I think they had a discussion in the School Choice and Facilities Committee, and they brought this motion forward, and I want to thank them for doing that, and being, being very cautious and taking a look at the state law. For those folks that aren't aware, when the recent education bill was passed, there was a part of it that said, anytime a nonprofit is to run one of the Commissioners Network schools, the past practices of enrollment, whatever, you know, however they were doing enrollment before it became part of the Commissioners Network, has to continue on, okay? Now, there's some questions as to what exactly were the enrollment practices of Milner, Thurman El, Milner Elementary School before it became part of the Commissioners Network. Now, I know for sure that it didn't have an enrollment cap at, on October 1st, and what was proposed by the Commissioner himself, I have a question, in his turnaround plan, was that enrollment would be capped on October 1st at Thurman El, Milner Elementary School, being run by Jomoki. Now, of course, the state law says that that's not, that can't happen, okay? So I think, I, I want to really commend these two for just at least bringing this issue up, and I'm comfortable with tabling it and having a discussion with the Commissioner. I'm not sure if this was an oversight on, on the State Department of Education's part or, or what. I mean, they, they pretty much had a hand in writing the law, so I'm not really sure what, what happened here. But my concern is that if we have an October 1 enrollment cap at Milner, what happens when kids decide, I'm sorry, what happens when families arrive to that neighborhood, right, which is a fairly, somewhat transient neighborhood to, to begin with, right? Where do they go to school? Do they go, have to ship their kid over to Sand? Do they have to go up over to Clark? Do they have to go to, I mean, that's a problem, because we've offered this community, really, I think, much more than we could actually deliver, to be, to be perfectly frank. But I think we at least have to offer them the ability to actually enroll in the school if they move close to it. I think that's, that's what we ought to give them. So again, I just want to commend you two for doing that, and I don't want to take any more time with this issue, but.
And I just want to say, I, you know, I'm very sympathetic to your point of view. Obviously, I think, I think that ultimately, we should pass this, but on the other hand, when the Commissioner, Mr. Poland, has talked with the Commission of Education, which I have not, and the Commissioner would like to talk with us before we, we move on this, then I think probably we should move on this, although I am concerned about what about families that are moving into that Milner district now? I would hope that we are allowing them to enter. I would hope that we are allowing them to enter Milner School, at least until we have voted on this, but I'm not sure whether we can do that, because we apparently desire of Jamoki is not to do that. And, so, I'm between an example and an argument.
I just want to provide one point of clarification, and that is that the item that is to be discussed was raised by the parents who served on the committee to put together the plan that ultimately went to the commissioner. And so, this was, this was actually discussed at the, by the planning committee, and was raised by parents who had a desire to stabilize the enrollment at the school. And so, while there's a lot more information later that I can certainly get to everyone in an information sheet, I just want to be clear that the item first came forward and ended up on the plan as a recommendation from, from the members who were at the school base level in that planning committee. And if there are, you know, questions, I can get answers to those, I want to make sure everyone has all the background on this.
Unfortunately, I mean, I can understand the parents' point of view, because, you know, we don't want, with all this transient population, that is not stabilizing for any school. And yet, on the other hand, what do we do with these families? And, and I know that is a very transient neighborhood, and to deny them coming into their neighborhood school and looking at whether it's special needs students, or ELL students, or just students whose family has moved. So, I actually, you know, support this motion, but I'm also feeling that because the commissioner would like to discuss this with further, I feel I may have to give him the benefit, you know, the opportunity to talk with him, even though I support this. I mean, I guess between now and the time we resolve this, it would be nice if some of these families at least had the opportunity to stay in the school, I mean, to come into the school.
One final point.
Mr. Chair?
Just a final point on this, is something, and I wasn't going to speak on it, but the superintendent brought it up, as the parents requested that the school population be stabilized. And I'm very sympathetic to that, because if you look at the past, the recent history of that design, that redesign, it's very clear that kids are coming in and out of that school at a rate that is not normal. It's not normal, it's man-made, okay? And if you look at the instructional audit for Milner, it's very clear that kids are being put into that school, right, between 2008 and 2011 in such a way that just doesn't make sense. And I think it is our obligation to look more at the way that we do choice, because it's very clear that Milner is a victim of the choice program here in this, in this city, okay? This is, this is not, this is not like, you know, parents, parents are concerned because they're sitting there thinking, well, in January, we're getting 20, 30, 40 new kids, I don't know how many it is. But I'm sympathetic to that as well, but we also have to follow the law and then reconsider the policies that we're doing that created the situation at Milner, or at least made it worse. So, I think that's, that's a longer conversation, but I think this is, this is part of what we should be talking about with the commissioner, is to what extent Milner Elementary is a victim of the choice program here in Hartford.
The, the resolution, the motion to table, is not a motion that speaks to the merits of your request, by any means. I think I commend the board members for raising the issue, because it is part of the statute, but it is not to be seen or to be understood as a way of saying that anyone disagrees with it. This is about tabling the matter until the next month, so we have the opportunity to get the clarity from the commissioner that we need. This is a complex situation, Milner has had years of poor results, there's progress that we hope is gonna get made here, we want to do it the way that we all can be comfortable with. So, we'll get the commissioner to participate in answering any questions we've got, and bring it back to the, to the board next month. Any further discussion on the motion to table? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, thank you very much. The third resolution is that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to accept a total of $1,723,088 from the State of Connecticut Adult Education Program for the Adult Education Center in Hartford. Any discussion? Dr. Kishimoto, presenting the item.
I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that these are state-mandated program for adult ed services in the city, that the school board system runs around US citizenship, English, second language, basic literacy programming, and high school completion. So, the 1.7 million goes towards these state-mandated programs. Does it now anything to add to that? This is something that comes to us every year as a board, or comes to you every year as a board, to accept these funds. Yes, and thank you for reminding me of that, because we, as, over the summer, at the retreat, this board asked for a workshop specifically on adult ed programming, what are some plans for development, and that's coming up in November.
This is on adult education?
This is on adult education, yes.
Because I, we really haven't got time to discuss it tonight, but I am concerned, I, I'm on the advisory board at Capital Community College for 20 years, and I gather that this is where the plan for adult education is, and I have some serious concerns, so we'll have it, but we have a workshop scheduled, so we won't discuss it now. Thank you.
Question. Is this, is this a grant that we apply to, to the state?
This is, these programs are mandated by state law, that each Board of Education will provide a program for adults in the city, to provide US citizenship, adult basic education, and high school completion programs, and the state provides those funds directly to the district.
Okay, my question is, did we apply for the funds?
There is a, there is a, there is a form, ED 144, that every April, we have to submit to the state. It's simply a formality.
Okay, was this form brought through the Hartford Board of Education?
This is not brought to the board in advance of the process of accepting the funds. I do understand that you've raised a question about this over the last few weeks, about the process for bringing grants to the board first. I do think we need a conversation about this, it's been a way of practice in which we have certain grants that are entitlement grants, that are mandated grants, that the process has been to bring those to the board for acceptance of funds, in which there hasn't been necessarily that step that you have raised.
I just wanted to end the record, thank you. The next question is, does this particular acceptance of funds relate in any way to any change of location for the adult education program?
No.
It does not.
All right, and I'll leave those questions for the workshop, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? So, may have a vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Number four, that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to accept a total of $269,109 from the State of Connecticut Cooperating Eligible Entity Grant for the supplemental adult education programs described above.
I'll send them.
Mr. Hall, very quickly, give us a summary on the, what's covered by this grant.
Sure, the state realizes that the adult education centers in the cities cannot cover all the needs of the adults, so they allow the entities within the city to collaborate with the Board of Education to provide, the program cannot. And in Hartford, since the early 90s, the Board of Education has partnered with three particular entities, the Literacy Volunteers of Greater Hartford, they provide services like one-on-one and two-on-one to adults who have zero, or almost zero literacy skills. The Urban League of Greater Hartford has provided programs in the north end of towns, so the GED and high school and adult basic education since the early 90s. And the YCA Read to Succeed program provides services to adults who have learning challenges, and these partnerships have been going on since the early 90s. And the, we, the state simply passes the money to them through the Hartford Board of Education.
So, the adult question, so the three community-based organization, this match juicified money from the Hartford Public Schools?
No, from the state through you.
So, part of this money goes, is through the Hartford?
All of the money goes to them.
And then goes with the three community-based organization?
Correct.
Is it possible during the workshop to obtain reports on how those community-based organizations, what are the outcomes of what they're doing, the demands they're receiving regarding adult education, how is it correlated to what we're doing within the school district, and how is that affecting our grants?
The SFS, in fact, they have to submit monthly, ah, yearly reports to the State Department of Education as well, so the SFS can provide us.
We can actually provide us in advance of the workshop, so that the board has that opportunity to read through that material, yes.